Work session for February twentieth, two thousand and twenty four is called to order. Mayor Roop is recovering from surgery, so I'm running the meeting tonight. The meeting is open to the public. Public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting. Anyone wanting to speak is requested to sign in and should be a New Windsor resident. When you speak, state your name and address. Please be advised that your time shall be limited to three minutes. Okay, so the first agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the work session of December eighteenth, because we did not have a January sixteenth work session. Everyone received the minutes. Do we have any changes? Not gonna get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as as written.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. The next thing on the agenda is the sludge hauling bid tabulation. You, Wayne?
Yep.
We decided, yes.
Okay, so we decided to go out to bid for sludge hauling at the wastewater treatment plant for the budget. We reached out to four vendors and we got replies from three that were interested. The first one being Fogles, which is our current vendor. Colson Septic is the second and Legacy Septic is the third. And they are as follows. Fogles Septic, which is our current vendor. They're located in Sykesville and they charge a hundred and forty dollars per load for hauling sludge from the wastewater treatment plant to the Westminster Septage Facility. For sludge hauling from the sewer pumping stations to the Westminster Septage Facility, they're a hundred and forty a load. After hours emergency, they're two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. A regular hour emergency, they're one ninety-five per load with a one hour response time. One site, they charge two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour with a one hour minimum. Colson Septic, they're local, they're from Woodbine. A hundred and thirty-five dollars a load for hauling from the wastewater treatment plant to the Westminster Septage Facility. Price is the same for hauling to this, from the sewer pump stations to Westminster at one thirty-five. After hours emergency is two thirty-five with a one hour response. Regular hours emergency is one eighty-five and they charge two thirty per hour. After forty-five minutes. And then finally Legacy Septic, they are also local, Manchester, Maryland. They charge two twenty-five per load from the wastewater treatment plant to the Westminster Septage Facility. And then two twenty-five per load from the sewer pumping stations to the Westminster Septage Facility. And after hours, they charge three hundred per load and regular hours, two fifty. And no one site price was received from them. Fogles, like I said before, is our current vendor. They meet the bid specs. They've been in business for forty years. And they offer jetback services. Colson met the bid specs, offers several options beyond the spec. Thirty years in business, no jetback currently. Fuel surcharge if it reaches five dollars a gallon. And Legacy meets the bid spec with the exception of the hourly cost. In business since nineteen seventy-eight. Price higher than the other bidders. And just for reference, we haul around five to ten loads a month, depending on temperature. And we recommend awarding the bid to Colson Septic based on the availability to respond within one hour and lower pricing.
Thank you, Wayne. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Have we in the past had to utilize any of the emergency response situations, whether after hours or regular hours?
Uh, we do. So basically, if we have an issue with a pump station where there's no bypass connection, we would have to use sludge hauling services after hours. SBR tank failures, same thing at the wastewater treatment plant. So we we use those quite frequently, actually. And then specifically, if there's an issue with a sewer backup as well, manhole to manhole, we'll we'll kind of bypass in the street, so.
Okay. Secondly, it looks like Fogles charges two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for, you know, for one hour minimum. I don't know how long it takes to 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 fill a truck. Okay, I'll put it that way. And then and then secondly, it says the Colsons charges two thirty after forty-five minutes. So are they giving us forty-five minutes as part of the hauling cost?
Yeah, so it would be forty-five minutes as part of the hauling cost as a typical pump out. After forty-five minutes, we would get the hourly rate. Now with with Fogles, you get charged for your response time too. So if it takes them two hours to get to your location, wherever they're at, you're paying from the time they leave till the time they show up. Whereas Colson, you know, they're they're going to be coming direct to us and it's going to shorten that that timeframe that we're paying.
Okay, thank you.
One question I had was the jetback services, is that used frequently and would we use that separate from this?
So unfortunately, Colson, they they currently don't have a jetback, so we'd still utilize Fogles for that. That cost is five hundred dollars an hour. We use that service regular, especially with sewer backups and things of that nature. There's a more cost-effective option. There's a trailer unit and that's more or less for sewer laterals on the public side that we would take care of and that's two fifty an hour, but it's a costly expense. There's very limited vendors that offer those particular services, unfortunately.
Anybody else?
With that, I guess I I would put a motion forward to award the contract to Colson Septic.
I would second that motion.
We moved in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess Wayne, you can just take over with your public works director updates.
Okay. Okay, just a couple couple updates and I wanted to get some feedback from the council. Public Works wishes to make a change to yard waste collection schedule to better manage the volume of yard waste and ensure timely collection. So we're asking for council support to split yard waste collection into two designated days each month as outlined in the proposed schedule that are provided in the mayor and council folder. As a reminder, Sneeder Summit will add a potential one hundred and twenty-eight stops for Public Works. Now, currently, we have twenty-five percent participation in town itself. So going with that math, we can, we would expect around thirty couple additional customers at Sneeder Summit. The one thing that's different with Sneeder Summit is there are no areas for debris collection like some of the other locations within town. The the yard sizes are limited. So composting cans and things of that nature, there's probably limited space to do things like that. So we might see a little bit more participation from them. And even even prior to kind of Sneeder Summit coming on board with us here in the in the early spring, we've seen an increased demand and and participation in yard waste over over the last couple of years. So we used to purchase, I think in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we utilized about fourteen to fifteen cans. And that's yard waste cans and now we're expecting to use at least twenty couple. And that's just specifically for yard waste, but we budgeted, I think, for forty-four, Gary, is that correct?
Based on the additional, what you're in your
Yeah, based on the additional yard
Anticipated, yeah.
Anticipated yard waste collection in addition to the street sweeper and and those public services, so. So I guess, is there any thoughts from the council on splitting it into two days?
So Wayne and and Alan had talked to me about the yard waste situation before and I thought having it span two days that they suggested is a is a good idea. It allows them to fully pick up the yard waste around town. Hopefully, it'll alleviate some of the calls into town when people, you know, think their yard waste has been missed when it really wasn't. They just didn't have time to get it on Thursday and they were coming back Friday. So we're hoping it will do that. So I'm in favor of of changing it to two days, twice a month, like like Wayne has stated. I do have, I won't say concerns, but the schedule that you have written here, Wayne, I I see that some of the months, it's the first and third, Thursday, Friday, and then some of the months, it ends up being the second and fourth Thursdays and Fridays of the month. And I'm just wondering if that's going to cause confusion for the citizens who are used to the first and third Thursday in a month. If if, like in May, for instance, I think it is, it's on the second and I I think I see why you guys did that. It spaced everything a little better, especially a month where there was five, five weeks in it. But I'm wondering if that's going to cause confusion for people. They're going to have to actually know the dates as opposed to just knowing it's the first and third, Thursday and Friday of the month. Just just a thought, I don't know.
Yeah, that's that's something that we can definitely work on. We were trying to move things around and avoid confusion, but we we all know from trash pickup in general that when there's an observed holiday, it affects trash and it's hard to keep up with, you know, when your your trash is going to be picked up. So we we considered those variables as well to try to make sure we could slide the schedule around so it would work with observed holidays. So we can we can tighten things down a little bit more. Again, that was a proposed schedule. I agree, you know, as as a resident myself, we're systematic. We like things a certain way and so I guess we could revise that and then you guys could could look at us, look at it and let us know.
It was just a thought. I don't know, you know.
We can get the, we can get the upcoming months out as however we set them, whatever we set the schedule to in the newsletters and then we can post them each month here and on the website. Yeah, it's going to cause people to lose their mind a little bit, sure, but I mean.
This is probably just me not absorbing the information correctly, but it's up here at number two. It's a spring summer schedule and you have day, you know, days and weeks, I mean, days and streets. But then for, so is that, but then the only thing it says about fall is first full week of November. So what does that mean? That's when it ends, the first full week of November?
Yeah, so so typically
Because you used to switch to leaves then.
We switch and the transition is the off stage.
Yeah.
So we're not quite sure when we switch. Every year, it's kind of different. And we want to be able to offer those services as long as we can. And there's just a certain point in time where it makes sense where we need to transition. And that's that's something that we just kind of do. So there's no particular end date.
So sometime early in November?
Yes.
Okay.
I took a look at this and I I think it's a great idea just because with Sneeder Summit coming on, they don't have the trees and, you know, and debris that that the Atlee Ridge, Blue Ridge and and Old Town has. But I would imagine in a couple of years, they will be, you know, so I think it's better to get prepared now to to split it into two collections per month. So I think that's a very thoughtful way of looking at it. A lot of forethought there. And your next topic too. I like your next topic.
Well, and people, I wouldn't say regularly complain on Facebook, but because I get the messages pretty, pretty, at least at least once a month. Somebody saying they didn't come get my stuff, so. So if we had it a little bit, and I know it's because you just ran out of time, you know, but and and I know the staff do a good job getting people out there to do it, but I think if it was a little bit more often, we would probably stop having that problem and it would be killing yourselves to try to get it done in one day.
Yep. All right, we'll revisit the schedule and and I'll touch base with everybody and and we'll go from there. So the next thing is street sweeping. I think when we purchased the street sweeper, there was a known issue with the screen and we decided to replace the screen. That's actually just came in last week. It's been installed. It's it's working perfectly. So we're we're happy about that and with the with the new screen, it actually has some some updates with the software and we're able to program specific users and do pre-checks on the machine. So that's a nice added feature. And and that kind of allows people to punch in with a password. It says the hours that they ran the machine. For me, as the as the supervisor, it sends me an alert and an email and says, hey, such and such, you know, check the the sweeper brushes and they they grease the sweeper and all those kinds of things. So that's that's a nice feature. So again, in the mayor and council folder, there is a proposed schedule for street sweeping. This schedule will be fluid based on the needs of the town. So this is a an added service that we're offering the residents that that not only benefits the residents, but it benefits the public works department as well and keeps debris from ending up in the storm drain inlets. So it's a it's a welcome change. We're looking to to sweep the streets about every two months. And my initial idea was to have signs made up and basically put the signs in place or right below the snow emergency signs that says street sweeping between this time and this time. Please bear with us, this schedule is going to be pretty fluid until we figure out the exact needs at each location. I know that Old Town is going to need a lot more attention than some of the subdivisions where the trees are spread out more. So we're considering that. We're also considering sweeping the parade route. I know in the past we've had Lehigh come in and sweep the parade route. So we're going to consider sweeping the parade route this year. And it'll and it'll help us with some of these road construction activities that we have where we can keep things clean and and everything like that. So one of the things that I will eventually recommend is purchasing the signs once we're comfortable with the sweeping needs of the town. So any any thoughts or?
I'd I'd just get get some designs and some signs that you were thinking. And we can go on a schedule. We could figure that out too and then we'll put it on the sign, Monday, Wednesday, whatever it needs to be.
Yeah, once you have an idea, and they have those in Westminster, I see them, it's like, you know, I think they're great.
No, Wayne, I'm good with the schedule, but it prompted a thought. Gary, did we add a little extra money in the budget for, I'll call them consumables for that sweet stripper, you know, brush or maybe some tires that they they
About that, yeah, would we add it into, well, it was a question, small equipment, because I, my instinct was to put it in vehicle maintenance, but that's technically not a a licensed, you know, registered vehicle, motor vehicles or whatever you call it, which surprised me. But so we just put it into another category.
It's it's considered a special vehicle and it's it's by permit, so it's it's not registered, so. All right, that's all I have on equipment. A couple more updates. The town farm. Main Spring, we have some monitoring wells out there. There were several wells that were drilled to locate water outside of the spring network that is being currently used as our water supply. These are, these wells are not considered to be production quality and I would like to, I would like permission to monitor some of the static water levels and drought indicators. Well, that's a, that's a big typo. So so basically, we're looking to partner with Carroll County Resource Management to install transducers in the wells to monitor the water tables out at the farm and how they directly relate to our mainspring source. I'd like to close some of the wells down that were problematic. Anytime you take a well out of production or monitoring status, you have to close the well by law. And so there are some wells there that have been known when they're pumped to cause sinkholes. And so I would like to take those particular wells out of service, abandon them properly and then put the other wells in observation. There's an additional well out there, MS five. We actually are appropriated to use that well right now if we build a water plant and tie it into the main line. The reason why we haven't is it's costly because there's a stream crossing and we would be sharing the existing nineteen oh seven line. So it's not feasible to do so right now. But I do want to also monitor that well, so that gives us an option in the future that if we decided, hey, the spring jeopardizes, under the influence, it's greedy, we could switch to that other water source and keep going. So it's a contingency and a capacity management plan, kind of all in one. So I'm looking for council direction to see if you guys were comfortable with me taking the lead along with Carroll County Resource Management to figure out what to do to develop that location and abandon the the other wells.
You want to draft up some? I I would be in support of that. It's just, we're we're going to have to get a better idea of how much that's going to cost and those kind of things.
Yeah. So the so the cost to abandon a well would be more significant than to turn it into a monitoring well. With some of the wells being problematic, problematic, it's probably better to abandon them properly. I can get costs from a well driller to see what that would cost to do that. And the transducers and the probes that we're looking at putting out at out at the other wells that we want to save are somewhere around seven hundred dollars a piece and they last for ten years. So as far as the partnership between Carroll County Resource Management and us, that's just regular labor costs of the town. They offer their services for free. So it's more of a partnership arrangement than anything, but I can give a detailed breakdown of what we're proposing and and then you guys can decide at a later date.
Wayne, is there we're looking to get?
So somewhere somewhere around six between there and the Danning's Road Network.
Is there any benefit maybe to the Carroll Land Resource to monitor those wells that cause issues? You know, instead of abandoning them properly and closing down, is there a benefit to anybody to have sensors in there monitoring whatever's going on in there?
So that's that's a good point. So right now, I think Carroll County has around fifteen observation wells throughout the county. Any kind of data that we can get is good for not only the county but the town. Main Spring is very unusual and its underground geography switches from bicarbonate rock to marble. And so there's no definitive right answer to that question because they're so diverse out there. And so I would I would lean towards the opinion of the county hydrogeologist on that. And he seems to think that we should at least keep three of those wells out of five or six of them for observation. So I'll defer to him on that. That's it. And then the second thing, and I touched base on it a little bit, the Danning's well. So Danning's is about three miles away from Main Spring and it's a it's a second water source that the town has. And I guess about three years ago, I replumbed the site and we put a meter in and we've relied on that that site in periods of drought. So I believe because the well was offline for so long, the pump might be compromised. So we're looking at replacing the pump. And similar to what we did at Hillside, I'd like to redevelop the well. And so basically, you take the well rig and you put it over top of the well and you use high pressure air and you blow out the well and you clean all the fractures of the well. And so over time, fractures in a well will calcify and so you'll lose capacity. And that's what we're seeing now. So basically, between redeveloping the well and installing a new pump, we could stand to gain thirty to forty gallons a minute, whereas now we're only doing about fifteen gallons a minute. So that's something that I want to do. I took original costs from the wells that we did at Hillside and per well, that was around twelve to fourteen thousand a piece and that's a final product. So that's in service, new pump, and then the well developed. So if, I guess at a later meeting, I can get kind of a tighter number and and get a proposal to get a gather to be able to redevelop that. If there's interest there, I think it's, I think it's a good bang for the buck and I think it'd be good use of the ARPA money if we could fund it that way.
That's what I was going to suggest.
So.
I'm in agreement with that. That's off of Bower Sox, right?
Oh, so that's on the other side of Bower Sox at our Danning's Road site.
Off of Forest, yeah. Four oh seven, gotcha.
So it's really low hanging fruit. And on a separate subject, and we don't really have that in here, we recently met with the county hydrogeologist and our consultant Hydro Terra about well drilling at one thousand Green Valley Road and the development of Atlee Well. So in Atlee Ridge, there's a site where there's a well that's already drilled. We're in the process of permitting that well and getting that well appropriated. It's very low hanging fruit and we remain optimistic that we can do thirty to thirty-five gallons a minute from that from that well. So that's about forty-eight thousand gallons in a day. And to complement that, basically, the town supply demand is ninety thousand a day. So it would be almost half of that. So this is another one of our efforts as far as secondary options and capacity management and things of that nature. So that's a good step in the right direction and we actually meet this week with MDE to go over the appropriation permit.
The nice thing about Atlee is we own the, we own the parcel. The well's there, it's existing. We would have to put in treatment and and connect it to the existing system, but that's a hundred and fifty feet of piping maybe to get to the court.
So electrical service, pump station treatment. So that's a, that's a good use of that site. We've had it surveyed, so we know exactly where the property lines are. Core markers are there, so we're ready for the next steps. Okay, and then lastly, I just have a recommendation based on my observation. Being a resident and an employee of the town, I noticed people speeding on thirty-one quite a bit. And so so I'll just, I'll just read what I wrote here. So I'm proposing speed limit changes within the municipal limits of the town. The addition of Sneeder Summit and the population growth in the county have led to an observed increase in speeding within the town. Additionally, residents of Sneeder Summit and Union Square face difficulties in navigating in and out of their developments due to heightened traffic on MD thirty-one, both east and west. Concerns also arise regarding site distance issues at Slingeth Lane, especially for the aging residents of Union Union Square who contend with traffic from both directions as well as New Windsor Pike, particularly from Blue Ridge subdivision. Another issue is the speed limit of forty heading into town, which poses risks for the school bus stop at Sneeder Summit. Unfortunately, vehicles heading westward may not become aware of the stopped school bus until they descend down the hill. To address this, I propose the installation of school bus signs to alert drivers in advance and lowering the speed limit to thirty miles per hour. Moreover, we propose lowering the speed limit on thirty-one east from just before Sneeder Summit. Moreover, we propose lowering the speed limit on thirty-one east from just before Snyder Summit to just before Tibbetts Lane, as well as lowering the speed limit on thirty-one west from just after Tibbetts Lane all the way into town to thirty miles an hour. This adjustment will enhance safety for the residents and commuters alike, mitigating the challenges posed by increased traffic and improving conditions for drivers in the area. Additionally, these sp- speed limit reductions would also slow down heavy truck traffic, decreasing the noise from tractor trailers before descending down the hill. Um, and then lastly, thirty-one is a state road, so if we were looking to do something like that, we would have to get their permission and I think they would do a traffic study.
They typically won't do studies for any kind of sign changes, stop signs, lights, speed reduction, anything like that.
So I I think that would be good for our community because um we've seen an increase in traffic because of Snyder. Uh, there's still a lot of trucks on the road. There's no indication at that particular area that there's a school bus stop. And so I've encountered several times when I was coming from New Windsor Pike, one to thirty-one, where people barely got stopped for the school bus, which is concerning. Um, we've also encountered issues at our Blue Ridge Pump Station with the guys being able to, you know, safely travel from the station to thirty-one. And all of a sudden, there's a car, you know, they come out of nowhere, um, and it's getting a little bit congested there. And I know years ago, the state highway proposed a traffic circle, which I don't really think is right for New Windsor. But I would think that a reduction in speed uh would be a good thing. Um, if you if you're going towards Westminster um east and you pass the Brooklyn Service Center, the speed limit abruptly changes to forty right there.
Right.
And right after that is a residential neighborhood of Snyder Summit, and then people just start hitting the gas as soon as they go up the hill, they're hitting the gas. And I think it's become something that needs to be looked at.
Totally agree with you. It's it's incredibly, I mean, if you're pull, I mean, gosh, in the last five years, pulling out of Old Windsor Pike on the thirty-one headed east towards Westminster. People are flying up the road and and, you know, they even if they see you coming, they are flooring it up the road. So you really have to wait till there are no cars. The other thing too is people used to walk, I used to walk into town from where I live. I won't do that anymore. I mean, it's just, you know, it it's just ridiculous how fast and the traffic, like you said, is certainly increased, so I'm all in favor of it. Uh, maybe I did so on the way over, I I read this this morning and I on the way over, I I did thirty and I was like, oh, my God. Thirty is kind of slow, but actually it's good because just like you, I've seen people flooring it down that hill. Cause it's forty and then they get to town where it drops to thirty, but you're right, that bus stop is there and I've seen cars almost run past the bus stop. And then or the bus is coming headed towards Westminster and it stops right there at uh Snyder's. And people are slamming on the brakes because they're anticipating that surge to get up the hill or, you know, fly down. Well, doesn't it get to fifty-one before you get to Tibbetts? Oh, fifty fifty-five, I mean.
Right past Snyder Summit going east, it gets to fifty-five right there.
Yeah.
And so if we just went another five hundred or seven hundred and fifty feet and then had that increase happen.
Yeah.
I think I think that would be better.
In in agreement with that.
Sure, it'd be up to the state, but maybe even, you know how they have uh out at Medford, they put in those.
Rumble strips.
Something to remind you, you're coming into a residential area, slow down, you know.
At the very least, a school bus sign might help too.
Exactly, I mean, whatever they be they be willing to do, I'd support.
I believe that we have to petition the state to do a traffic study. We we haven't done one in a while, we 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 have done them over the years through town. You know, and they come and tell you, yeah, it's thirty and that's the way it should be, or it's thirty, you know. Um, but I think that's the first step that we have to take, uh, is probably, whatever that process is, Gary, I don't know to.
I don't know it either, I I and I don't know a specific person at the state highway, but I know where to start. I can I can reach out to Andrew Radcliffe, he's the like district engineer.
I mean, it may, it takes a a letter from the mayor and council to initiate that, I'm sure we're all in favor of having that done.
I'll get I'll find out who we should address it to and then I think a letter a letter from mayor and council would be a great start, a good idea. A- Andrew will know who who to go to, I I know him pretty well, so.
And the thing I've gotten as of late, um, and then not often, but every once in a while is where you know, I'm I'm descending my speed limit, coming into the town here from Westminster down, and I'm getting flown past on the uh on the side.
Yeah, that's it, it's yes.
Cause you're gonna save like five whole seconds by driving like a crazy person, you know.
So I think I think it's been a couple of months ago, I think Mr. Carlson had asked us about painting the curbing uh there at Slingeth Lane at the entrance of um of Union Square. And um, I think the homeowners association got together and actually painted that themselves for visibility. So I know we would have the support of that entire community in this endeavor, and I think it's really important to them. Uh, I have a heightened sense of alert because of our snow plowing activities recently. And people's disrespect not to use caution while we're plowing in those areas. And I, snow, ice, it doesn't matter, they still speed. And um, there there was a potential that we almost got T-boned by a car that was traveling in excess of the speed limit. So um, it's it's something that's concerning.
Uh, right at Slingeth uh Lane and thirty-one, there was a, it might have been about eight months ago, there was a pretty devastating accident. Where somebody got, I guess they were making that left into uh the reserves. And they got T-boned and flipped the car over, you know, and um, I was wondering why they painted that curb like that, but I mean, you could see it at night, you know, so. Um, no, I think it's all, I think it's a great idea.
All right, that's all I have.
Twenty-five budget.
My turn, huh?
Your turn.
Okay. So I gave you all paper copies and then we have it up, we can bring it up on the screen as well. Um, so just running down any of the changes, uh, did have a couple uh late additions uh that are not included in the in the uh spreadsheet, but I'll make note of those as I go through. Some things we were waiting on. So uh, starting with the general fund, uh, the revenues, um, we did get our our real property um from uh from the state uh right on right on February fourteenth, uh, right on schedule. And it's estimated at uh five hundred and ninety thousand, which is a sixty thousand dollar increase, so that's good news there on the revenue line. And then we were, I just got today at um literally like four forty-five today, I got the information from the county on the uh county town program road grant, and I had put in a placeholder of seventy-seven thousand and it's actually eighty-two thousand six sixty. So that's an additional fifty-six hundred and sixty dollars in revenue there. So the general fund um revenue, um, yeah, I'm showing an increase of of ninety-nine thousand seven sixty, but I gotta add in that that uh fifty-six sixty on the on the town uh town town county program there, so that'll increase a little bit. So that's good on the revenues there, on the expenditures. Expenditures on the enterprise, so under the professional services. I'm sorry, I skipped them, it's all under executive, I'm sorry, salaries, uh, we're waiting for council approval on the executive salaries. Uh, the part-time receptionist that we've discussed that um previously that is in the budget for fiscal year twenty-four um is not included in those in that total for executive salaries at this point. Um, that number there actually would be um would would be uh projected or planned for in fiscal year twenty-five. So it's it's, I believe in in twenty-four, it was fifteen an hour and I have it in at sixteen an hour for for twenty-five. So that's what that twenty thousand eight hundred reflects. That's a hundred percent, just as a reminder, that's a hundred percent general fund. Um, it wouldn't be um uh healthcare or retirement uh qualified. But we are looking, we're Dana and I are talking about trying to and and uh enhance things a little bit is to to maybe just pay some, pay the holidays or things like that. You know, just to help with with getting some some folks in if we if we do get get that approved. Um, uh, on the, let me see here, the professional services, the audit fees, we talked about this. Uh, the three-year contract with ZA is up, um, we discussed it at the February council meeting. Um, whether to rebid or continue with ZA, uh, we were waiting for some costs uh from them for uh the next, this next year, which is actually fif- fiscal year twenty-four's audit. We did get those numbers uh recently and it would increase uh from uh twelve thousand four ten is what we paid this year to seventeen thousand two hundred, which is an increase of four thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. So um, again, we had um account, we found that accounting services are are hard to come by. When we looked at the accounting assistant that we did uh budget for in the current current budget and we we put that out to what, eight or nine Dana, and we got one. So those are difficult services to find at at this level. Um, so I mean, it's it's an increase, uh, a significant increase, but it's it's, we are happy with their services. Um, we're familiar with their staff, their staff's familiar with us. Uh, so again, just want to get some direction from council on that.
Um, we're required to.
It's law, it's law to have an audit, yeah. The question, the question comes down to, we talked about it on the other, the other thing I'll mention shortly is, if we rebid, we we don't have time to get those bids in and approved into this budget. So we would basically put the number we got from ZA in this case in as a budget holder and hope that that's accurate and they bid again and we end up there. As a worst case scenario.
But we've also bid and nobody really returned, so bidding again won't.
Right, exactly, so.
I mean, I know from being on two two boards that it is tr- difficult to get these services, so.
And if you're, if you go, if the council's good with it, then I think what we'll request Dana is is to get another, we'll get, this was just for one year. I think we should request that we get two more years and see what we are there and and basically re-up for three for three years.
Good idea, yeah.
So, okay, we'll go that route. Okay, so where else, where are we, where are we? Oh, in that same professional services category, we added this uh HR consultant in, this is new under general fund. In FY twenty-four, under the enterprise fund personnel, uh, a line item was added for a cost of service study at thirty-five thousand. And the cost of service study was recommended by Circap after they did the water and sewer rate study, which the council decided not to go with. So what we're proposing here this year is to um change that to uh an HR consultant, split it fifty-fifty between general fund and enterprise fund. And um, and we and we're estimating at at twenty thousand for each for each general and and enterprise. We're waiting on some cost estimates from Dana's working on that. Um, and an HR consultant would look at um some things like that they would look at are staff restructuring, job descriptions, employee handbook, pay rates, et cetera, I think as discussed, are suggested by mayor and council at at the February meeting. So we put the line item in under general fund here and then you'll see it down in in enterprise as well, just changed the kind of kept the what it was and then added HR consultant um in there as well. We 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 should have some uh more definitive numbers.
I reached out to uh a a family friend who does, who's a HR for HSP. Um, and she gave me two.
Diane?
Diane, yeah, and she gave me uh two other names to reach out to, but I do have the cost for one so far. Um, and she had worked with me before.
Moving down under municipal building, we had um IT support computers. We were waiting on a cybersecurity cost from Maryland IT, which we received. Um, and that uh cybersecurity is going to be a requirement in the near future from Legit, who handles a lot of our insurance. And that cost from Maryland IT is uh six twenty-five a month or seventy-five hundred a year. So I've added that into that IT support computer line um uh budget uh line over there. So that's the increase of seventy-five hundred added in there. The office equipment service agreements, um, again, uh, that we, I mentioned last month, we were uh waiting on a price, the Indigo Vision is the system program for operating, viewing and storing uh the town hall camera systems. And Spiker Security oversees uh that for us. And they uh informed me uh that Motorola had purchased um um Indigo Vision and they're not sure how long they're gonna support uh that that software. So I uh did get a price from Spikers on uh replacing that system if we need to do that down the road. It doesn't really have any timeframe on it, but it's a uh an additional seventy-two sixty-one to do that. So I put it, put in for seventy-five hundred in that line item if we if we need that for FY twenty-five. So that one's been taken care of. Uh, going down to no changes in planning or zoning under public works. The salaries, again, uh, we're waiting on council approval on that. The entry level position is not included currently in the public work salaries at this point. Uh, that position as a reminder would is proposed at seventy-five percent, general fund, twenty-five percent enterprise fund. Um, Director Myers prepared a very detailed document that was avail available to you all to review. And we asked that you all take a look at that at the council meeting, put a lot of time and effort into that. Um, that's the split that you see there of uh, that would be seventy-five percent of that of that salary for that position. And then the twenty-five will show up under the enterprise fund.
Gary, can I stop you right there for a moment? Can we drop back for a second uh to the planning and zoning at the top of the the page there? Um, planning commission chairman Schultz and I have been having some discussions and um Chairman Schultz thought that the stipend that the members of the planning commission um received, the thirty-five dollars per meeting, has not been changed in a very, very long time. And um, I told him I would initiate uh some conversations with us. He was um curious if the 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 council had the appetite to change that to uh fifty dollars a meeting. Uh, that's an in- increase of fifteen dollars. Um, I believe that if the, you know, if it happened for the planning commission, it would also affect probably our BZA and our ethics and any other commission members that meet. Now, typically they don't meet, it really is just effective for the the uh the planning commission. And and we do have probably, you know, ten meetings a month and uh raising that stipend to fifteen dollars. Um, I think it's it's about another nine hundred dollars or so in the budget a year to 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 cover them for the meeting. So I told um Mark that I would throw that out to you guys and and um see what what your thought was. And I don't know the last time, you know, when it was changed to to thirty-five dollars, I I don't know how how long it is. But I know when the planning commission meets, uh, you know, we typically meet for two hours. Um, Mark, you know, has our meetings and typically we go six to eight when we do. So there is a couple hours involved and and um if if the the members do due diligence, we do uh review and do other things uh as well outside of the meeting, but.
I think it's fair, um, I know that you guys also don't meet when you don't need to, so it's not like it's a monthly uh fifty dollars a month, there could be two, three months that you guys don't meet at all. uh fifty dollars a month, there could be two, three months that you guys don't meet at all. Um, or if it's busy, you guys do meet monthly, so um I do like having uh per meeting and fifty dollars per meeting seems reasonable.
I agree with that.
I'm not gonna say anything, obviously.
Astaining uh opinion too, because it does affect me.
We'll just have to factor that in. We need a motion for that? We can put it in the budget, but.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know in the code where, cause I know in the code somewhere it says thirty-five dollars.
Does it? Oh, it's actually spelled out?
I would demand, I mean, there has to be some thing that says thirty-five dollars.
Do a motion, but we can also, we can also just have, do this at the at the March council meeting, Michelle will be here.
Just change it and then we could do that next time, okay?
So, let me see, where did I leave, okay, so the pub, we were in public works there. So the the one thing I do wanna mention is uh another kind of a last minute addition here was um the trash yard waste, um, we uh we have, we currently have Republic Services for our our roll-off uh dumpsters uh containers. Um, and they they were on the same contract, um, three-year contract that uh aligned with Hughes. So they had a three-year contract with two one-year renewals. So when I reached back, when I reached out to Hughes, I reached out to Republic. It's been about a month ag- ago that I did that and finally got back uh heard back from them uh the other day. And there eh, this fiscal year, which is a third of their third year of their contract, it was a hundred and eighty dollars per thirty yards, it's a thirty yard, right Wayne, I think it's a thirty yard roll-off. Um, and they came back with the uh uh amount for up to two hundred and seventy-five dollars for that same roll-off now. So uh, that's a pretty significant increase, it's like fifty-two percent, I believe. And I confirmed that with the the contact, um, uh, John Lehman, I think is his name with Republic. And just to confirm that and, you know, got the same story we hear from everybody that, you know, they've incurred numerous costs over the last several years of labor, steel, fuel, tires, again, basically saying it's driven from COVID, so um, excuse me, we run the same the same situation if we rebid the service, we're not gonna have it back for this this uh budget. Uh, anyway, so we, if we put it in uh based on, excuse me, the two seventy-five, it's it's kind of a worst case scenario anyway.
Well, I will say that I had looked up the twenty-twenty bids from last time, after Gary and I talked about this. And Hughes was twenty dollars higher than what Republic's one eighty was. Um, and then anow- another outside vendor was two forty, I believe. So it might be the times that we're in, you know, that that price per dumpster.
So the difference is uh two seventy-five to one eighty is ninety-five per dumpster. And based on Director Myers' uh numbers for needed dumpsters, I think we're up to forty-four, we're projecting. So if you take that no- ninety-five times the forty-four, that gives you an increase of forty-one hundred and eighty dollars that we would add to that, I'd say forty-two hundred, add that to that, that line, so. Unless there's any, um, you know, suggestion otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and and add that, increase that line item accordingly.
I mean, I guess you're going to have to, but I mean, we put that in, but um, are we still thinking that it, we should reach out and see if there's other vendors out there that are doing roll-offs that, or is it just not worth it? The time?
Batters, do you think, do that in this area?
Last time, we only were, received three bids in twenty-twenty.
They're from the 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 three that.
So I'm not, I'm not thinking we're too far off from the highest bidder last time, really, and between Hughes and the highest bidder last time, you know, we're kinda right there now. Three years later.
Yeah, and again, I would do the same thing, they only gave us the one year, I would request them to do, you know, fiscal year twenty-five through another three year and 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 see where, see where we are there as well. We always have the option of just, under the current contract, just going year to year. But we would, we have, we have, will be this year and then one more year under the current contract. So, but I can certainly request that, may take another month for him to get back to me, but.
Could we do that, like informally, like ask for prices rather than build an R F P and go out to bid again? Just to put a feeler out there?
We could pull up, like you said, the 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 bid that we did, the the folks that bid last time and when you said that was twenty, I think, or twenty-one. Just reach out to them and ask for for current prices on on the roll-off.
Research, basically, yeah.
It can't hurt at this point.
Some local guys that were getting into dumpsters around here.
Well, there's, there's J and J, they've expanded within the last year, but um I can't think of anybody else outside of them as far as a smaller vendor.
Smaller venue necessarily would be cheaper either, but is they gotta pay for those dumpsters?
I mean, it's, it's about two-hour travel time, by the time they pick the dumpster up, take it, tip it, bring it back. You know, truckers, C D L driver, forty-five dollars an hour plus the truck.
Sure.
You know, it it adds up pretty fast.
And that's exactly what the Republic's response was, labor, steel, fuel and tires, I mean, they're, you know, the steel, I don't know if I'm buying that, cause I mean, I don't know how often they they uh buy new dumpsters, but.
Their dumpsters get beat up.
Three out of four, I'll buy, but.
Those dumpsters are just sitting here for.
Yeah, that's the other thing too, I mean, fortunately, that is a good point, Dave, you know, we just pay for tipping. So that dumpster sits there at our convenience for all of this time. And that's a loss of use and a loss of revenue for them, and we're times four often, so really.
Yeah.
Yep, good point.
Yeah, typically, when you rent one of those, you know, you're getting it for a couple days or a week or whatever and.
Per day too.
Yeah, and we're sitting on it.
Yep.
And for the convenience of the time, and it is convenient to have it there.
Yeah, true.
Okay, what else, Gary?
So, again, then the last thing we will, we will uh do uh to balance the um ultimately, to balance the general fund is is put the difference eh between the revenue and the expenditures when everything is finalized and then put it, that goes into the capital project budget to to balance and zero out the general fund. Um, parks, that was finalized, there really wasn't much change in there, well, Director Myers and I went through that category, that's that's complete now. The insurance is everything but the health. Um, we we finalized that number and that number includes workman's comp uh without any new positions and vehicles and buildings, uh, insurance through Legit. And they provided an estimated ten percent increase, but even with that increase, we're able to keep that that line item the same, based on where we we are year-to-date and uh and what the, what we're projecting, so. That one's set, and then down to enterprise revenues, no changes there. Our our increase is not as 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 significant as it is in general fund, it's at ninety-four hundred and eighty-two dollars right now. Increase, and then under expenditures, uh, water. Um, we had uh two, we have two line items yet we're waiting on, which I'll hit in a minute. The contractors consultants uh is complete, there's no change for F Y twenty-five. And then we're waiting on both, uh, we're waiting on M V S's budget for water and sewer, so those lines, uh, those numbers will go in here accordingly, uh, as an expenditure, I've reached out again to so we should be getting that, hopefully by the March council meeting, we'll have those those numbers. And again, the capital projects line, the only difference down here is the leftover between, the difference between revenues and expenditures. And when everything was set, is split half and half typically between water and sewer on those line items. We had a couple yet, again, it's the.
Again, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it, but we have the the proposed public works entry level position in the twenty-five. Um, should there not be an increase in the insurance?
It's all, it, well, it's not, it's not listed in there, but I have the numbers run for it, for that position. It's for the insurance, it's 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 an estimate, that's all you can do.
Is that included in the, in the, the budget number for six-five?
Uh, under the personnel? Yeah, it does, it does.
But shouldn't, shouldn't we, don't we need to have that in there in the event we do?
Well, I'm waiting for a decision on if we are not, or if we are or if not. I mean, I have the numbers broken down that I can add in.
I mean, for us to accurately see the bottom line of the budget, right?
Is there no cost for the other position either? I know there's no benefits, but you have the workman's comp and stuff, right?
So it's based a hundred, a hundred dollars per hour, and then you take that and times it by six dollars. So a hundred dollars per salary hour.
Yeah.
And that for public works, and then fifty cents for hundred, every hundred dollars for office.
Okay.
So you just do the math that way, yeah.
So, I hear what you're saying, we, for the, for the March council meeting, I've already started breaking down the increases to both general fund and enterprise fund for for each of the positions separately and then total. So, one thing I didn't calculate in was the the, what you're mentioning there. So I'll pull, we'll pull those numbers together and have that, have that ready for the next meeting, so you can see. One position will do this to to both and both positions will do, you know. It's gonna hit, I can tell you, it'll hit the general fund much he- harder and heavier than enterprise. Because the part-time position is a hundred percent enterprise and the public works position seventy-five percent. But there's some other costs that we have to calculate, phone, uh, computer for for this, for this position. Um, uh, uniforms, expenses, things like, things like that, they're not as big line items, but we were trying to capture all the costs that would hit both funds if we go with either one, so. We're eighty-five percent there right now, I just don't have it here with me, so, we can do that, yep. Uh, we were down sewer, right, yeah, so sewer, we're waiting on on M V S again. The uh, let me see where, sewer. Uh, the tool, the tool line item, we uh finished out, there's no change there. And then the sludge, the sludge disposal, um, I've budgeted out based on the current Fogel's numbers, so we, I can look at that difference. The 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 gallons that we haul, the number, the amount of hauling that we do won't change. That's that's driven by, we, we, at the minimum we do, minimum we do two, two times a month. Lately, more o- more freak, more often than not, we're we're hauling four times, we're hauling every week now. And that's basically due to, you know, flows, that's due to, due to, due to the tanks being above ground and what Wayne referred to as weather, in the wintertime, you have to haul more to keep the, keep the bugs doing their, doing their thing.
Most of heat retention, they're not happy.
That's again, why, one of the things we're looking at for the upgrade is to go to in-ground or partially in-ground tanks to heat, keep that thermal heating in place. But um, I keep a very detailed spreadsheet on sludge hauling and how I keep averages and then project. That's how I just project the gallons that we're going to, what we're gonna end up hauling, so we're gonna, I mean, we're projected to haul seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons is a lot. That's a lot, that's a lot of hauling, more than we've ever done, so. You know, but I could adjust the numbers, I don't think it's gonna change all that much with uh the change from Fogels to uh, to the new, to the new folks, but I can look at that um, number more closely now that we've made that decision. Okay? Um, and again, the capital line, the capital budget project there. And then under um personnel, we got both executive and public work salaries. Uh, waiting on council approval. Level position for public works that reflects the twenty-five percent of the uh, of the salary there. And the the part-time position does not impact uh enterprise. And I've added in the, I had the cost of service study, which was originally thirty-five thousand in twenty-four. And we moved changing that to the H R consultant and estimating it twenty, and I'll update those once we get the numbers, hopefully for next meeting.
So the H R consultant technically gonna be forty thousand split between general and?
That's what we're, we're estimating at this point, yeah.
First bid, from the first number that I got, I don't see it being forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
But it depends how long.
We really didn't know, so we
Sure.
Yeah.
We kind of just took it like, I guess, educated guess. So that's all I have right now, the bottom part of that, that, you know, we get into the, your totals. Um, combining all your your revenues and expenses, and again, the both, both funds have to zero out, so the total budget will zero out eventually. Um, and then the bottom part is just the individual line items that M V S bids when we get their their budget proposal and we just put the total for water and total for sewer up as an expenditure above, so. Any questions on the budget at this point? Long, pretty good, we're, I think we're.
We're getting really good at this.
Into it, I'm getting pretty good, huh? Yeah, so we're, we're, we're pretty well there, um, like I said, we're waiting on a few things and then some direction on the positions and we should be able to finalize things and I'll get you those breakdowns uh for the next meeting on on what those impacts will be for both, both funds, next meeting.
I know that's a lot of work, Gary, thank you, I appreciate it. A lot of other folks involved, so I appreciate all the effort. A lot of work.
All right.
The letter, the Maryland thirty-one water, green project letter.
Yeah, yep, yep, so that letter is, I sent it to you all, I believe, Friday last week. And um, we have, I've put, put our heads together and come up with a a pretty detailed uh, letter, um, and Michelle has looked at it as well, um, and her only only suggestion was a verbiage thing of of the one line, the one thing where we say that uh recharging a line may cause something, they, she wasn't sure if that would cause some confusion, but.
Added stress.
Yeah, we can tweak that if we need to, but.
Recharging an old line may cause added stress and resonance, should be mindful of potential issues, did she have a suggestion?
No, she just, she just uh actually responded a couple hours ago with not being here. Um, she said, do you want me to look at the letter, and so I sent her that. I can, I can, we can come up with something, but I think the general gist of the letter is.
Like cloudy water, blah blah blah, or?
On the line.
The line will will go dead, right, when we put the the connections, the new meter.
Yeah, so basically, you're talking about a pressurized system that's very old. And so then you're vacuuming the water out of it, and then you have a void, and then you're putting water back in it. So it's, it's a very sensitive thing.
Put it in slowly.
Sound good?
Specifically like with galvanized pipe, more than copper, galvanized, really, there's no room for expansion, so.
So how do you, how do you mitigate that?
Turn it on slow.
Very slow, yeah.
Everybody stay home when this is going on to make sure they don't have pipes bursting in their house?
So we're gonna work with the contractor and we'll be there when we make the line go live again. But there's always a risk, it's just like, you know, there's a risk when you take medicine, there's a risk when you go to the doctor. So we're just putting that out there. It's just like, you know, there's a risk when you take medicine, there's a risk when you go to the doctor, so we're just putting that out there that. A little bit of a risk associated with that.
But to Kim's point, they will, they will know because the meter will now be on the outside. So they'll see it keeps spinning and spinning, and then now they'll be alerted, hey, the homeowner should be aware that it's, seems like on the inside that it's, it's spinning. Um, something's leaking in there, so.
Person who has galvanized pipe, I'm like.
Everybody else along.
He updated his, but I think most of us along the, the route probably do, you know, so.
A lot of them are, yeah.
So, so Wayne and, and Gary, this, the, doesn't necessarily have to do with, with the letter itself, but I've had several, several residents. Um, now have approached me and, and talked to me, not, not a new subject, about the meters, okay? The old meters, when we go to take them out, and, um, positions have changed a little bit where they're, they're, they're not like opposed to the, the meter being taken out. But they're, they're looking for a device that can be installed in that straight pipe that's going to be reinstalled where the meter was, that will show flow. Not gallons going through it just to show flow, I'm one of those residents that's, that's sensitive to that and would like to do that, too. And, um, I told the residents, you, you know, I, I'm not advocating to keep the meters. But I am advocating that, can we talk to first-class, um, mechanical? Um, that this is something that some residents may be interested in, and maybe they have a solution. And the residents realize that, you know, if it costs whatever to put it in, that that's on the shoulders of the residents to do that. But I think, you, you know, as opposed to having a bunch of residents trying to contact them, if, if we have the ability. To let them know that there is this concern, residents are looking for some device that we can put in here, is there something that they can look into? Prior to doing this that we may be able to utilize as a resident?
I would, I would strongly suggest that the town take the meter and the setter out. Um, after that, it's a private issue, there are several low-cost effective devices on the market. Uh, you can go on eBay, Amazon, um, there's all sorts of places to network to get those. Meters or devices that actually clamp over the pipe, they work off of magnetics, and they can sense flow. Uh, if you have the internet, they send you alerts and say there's a possible leak, there's all sorts of avenues for that that are inexpensive. So you can go on eBay right now, and for seventy-six dollars, you can buy a meter, and if you have three-quarter inch plumbing. It comes with your pipe nipples and everything you need, and put it in, in a straight piece of pipe, a straight run, and you're, you're good to go, and that gives you a point to read. Um, there's, there's mag meter devices that clamp over the pipes, they're like a hundred and fifty bucks, you connect them to the internet. And there's an app, and it'll alert you if there's a leak or running water or anything like that.
But, but today's point, too, is there is devices that can actually shut off the water and stuff, too. Um, I know that some plumbers, you know, go with certain, uh, companies to do those things. Um, would it make sense to have first mechanical say, hey, here's the one that we typically install in customers that want something like this? And maybe have like a flyer to say, hey, for an extra two fifty or whatever it may be. They'll install it at the homeowner's expense.
Yeah, I mean, that's always an option, but I, I would always, I always err on the side of cau- of, of one caution. Whenever I'm dealing with a contractor that the town uses, I don't typically say, hey, such and such, use this contractor, they're great. Sure. I would say that if you're comfortable with first-class mechanical and how they, you know, take the meter and setter out. And they provide a cost-effective solution that, yes, you could get them to install one of those devices, but there's. Other plumbers out there that'll do it as well.
Well, I, I understand, but if I'm having first class come into my house and then go install an eighteen-inch piece of pipe. I'm not gonna wanna pay another plumber to come back in and remove that eighteen-inch piece of pipe and, and put two, two, you know. Twelve-inch pieces and, or whatever, and, and a, and a, a device between it, I would like to, to get it done when they were doing it. And that's what, if first class said, we have a device when we come to take your meter out, and I can say, yep, for the extra cost. Do that for me at the, at the same time, it's on my cost and it's, but it's only in my house once doing that job.
Yeah.
And, but someone, you know, someone needs to talk to first class and let them know that that's even.
That's gonna have to be done before the fact, 'cause you don't wanna just walk into somebody's home and be like, hey, you wanna spend an extra three hundred bucks?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can reach out to first class and see, let, make them aware that there, there may be, it's been a concern raised or a question raised. And there may be, uh, you know, some requests to do that, and is there any points that they, you would recommend? And it would be clearly, again, separate from what they be building the town, and it would be a, a, a private. Something between you and them.
See, again, if we, if we left the setter in and just removed the meter, you just need a five-eighths to five-eighths plan meter, and you just wind it in and you're done.
Plumbers ain't gonna know, I mean, not everybody knows how to do that.
Kim's not gonna be going and getting a five-eighth plan.
Have the water shut off to, to redo that, right?
I guess, I guess my reservation on letting residents have the meters, or the meters or.
No, no, we don't want, we don't want the meters.
About keeping the meters.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I know that, but I'm saying that is the easiest solution, like, if you take a newer meter and put in that setter, you're done. It's, it's that easy, so basically, and first class, they, I'm sure they've dealt with LB Water. You go to LB Water, you get a meter that fits in the setter, you wind it on and you're done, and then that's your meter, you've paid for it. You get what I mean, that's the easiest solution.
Wait, so like, uh, non-intrusive, like, you don't have to cut the pipe to put that meter on, it's something that wraps around?
You would unplug the towns and plug in your.
Is that even it? It sounded like what you were saying, it was something that goes around, that's magnetic that you, you.
That's a, that's another style, I, I, I was talking in the context that we would remove the meter and then put a straight piece of pipe.
Well, that's what, that's what we are doing.
That's what we're doing.
Removing the meter and we're putting in a straight piece of pipe. And residents, at least a couple, wanna know if there's a device that we can put in that straight piece of pipe that will show.
Yeah.
Water flow, that's all, just water flow.
And the benefit to the resident is they're, they're removing that pipe anyway, so the cost might be, you know, somewhat lower.
Cause you're doing it.
Because you're, they're already removing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, someone that had a leak outside. Got a tremendous water bill, and, and I wasn't smart enough at the time to go down and see my little thing moving, but blame me, I look at it all the time now.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out and see, and make them aware and see if there's something that they, a device that they, that they use or re- or, or recommend. And just make them aware that they may be approached for that, and it's.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gary, I went in and, and changed it, just to be, cause I can't help it, cause I write, you know, that. We weren't consistent with Maryland thirty-one, sometimes we were small D, so I went in and changed them all to, to large D, but.
Is that on the, the one that's in the folder?
I think it should be saved, but if not, if it didn't, then you could, that's.
It should be, yeah.
Saved it and changed it and saved it, but other than that.
And we'll look at the.
And then whatever Michelle wants you to say about.
Yeah, well, well, Wayne and I will talk about that, um.
They should tease that out a little bit more, maybe, or?
But other than, any other comments? Okay, 'cause we got, Kim's already put together a, a mass mailing list, and we wanna go ahead and get this, get this out here soon. As possible, get, get the word out, and.
Yeah.
A merge, let, let, uh, mailing list together for that, so.
So, um, Midlandianic was out today doing test fitting over top of the water valves, you might have saw them in the intersections. So there, those are the tie endpoints, so that's the limit of disturbance for the project. So they're, they're making good progress there, I think all the saw cutting's done, if I remember correctly.
So.
Um, they're gonna start working on sewer cleanouts. As a reminder, the green stakes are for the proposed sewer cleanout locations. Um, we sent out letters to the conflicting properties where there were trees over top of the sewer cleanout, so I think that's done. Um.
Four, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
For locations.
So I think we're heading in the right direction.
Did the state come out and look at those proposed, because remember from our meeting with the state highway that. We weren't sure if some of those cleanouts were going to be in places where they were proposing sidewalk or changes? And they were planning on sending someone out, I think, to compare plans?
To, yeah.
Green stakes?
I don't know if the state's been out, I've seen, I've seen state, what, what I, I thought was state employees out periodically, I don't know exactly what they were doing.
We were trying to keep those cleanouts out of the sidewalk, right?
Ideally, yes, yeah. I don't know, I can't say for sure if that's, if the state's been out to look at those stake locations. I don't know if they know for sure where they're putting trees at this point, so.
I'll chase with Bob tomorrow, let's see what he says, if he's talked to anybody, cause they've been out and about.
Maybe you need to send something to that Maria or whatever.
Marie France, yeah.
Okay.
And then just upcoming council meetings, uh, March sixth is council, March eighteenth is work session, and April third is council again.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
Trash is tomorrow, right?
It is.
Yeah. Uh, concerned resi- concerned resident, uh, not saying any names, Darnella Cornick is, uh.
Yes, there is trash pickup tomorrow, yes. Okay, as the mayor would say, anything else for the good of the order?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion. All right, we have a motion in a second, those on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is closed.